All right, everybody. Do I have a motion to return to open session?
Second.
Ms. Franklin and Dr. Gitry, any discussion? Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to certify closed session that to the best of each member's knowledge, only a public business matter is lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law or discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered?
So moved.
Ms. Purcell and Dr. Gitry, any discussion? Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond? Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to return student A to school?
So moved.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Franklin, any discussion? Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond? Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. All right, and that brings us to what we're all here for tonight. Excited to hear from our search firm companies. We'll, uh, we'll call each one up individually. I'll give you a chance to present. We give the board a chance, go around, ask questions, clarifications, and then we'll move on to the next one. So first up, we're gonna have Dr. Kevin Kastner and Dr. Wayne Harris from BWP and Associates. We'll begin our presentations for the superintendent's search process.
Members of the board, uh, first off, Dr. Graham, congratulations. It so happens that almost ten years ago to a day is when I had my first meeting with this board as an interim superintendent. And, uh, I know what a wonderful job you're going to do because I worked with you closely over the years, and congratulations on a good choice for the board. My name is Kevin Kastner. I, uh, am one of the members with BWP. We're pleased to be here. One of the things, as you'll notice, uh, when we have the pictures of all the board members here, there's no more important decision that you'll make in selecting your superintendent. You all know that. The fact is, some of you have been through it, some of you are going through it the first time, it's an exciting time for a school system to build on a lot of your strengths, but also to move forward as you find the next leader. Uh, next slide, please. One of the things, as you're looking to pick a search firm, all the firms do very much the same process, but it's trying to develop a relationship with a group that you can trust and also someone that has a track record. One of the things that we find in any of the searches, and Wayne and I have done over fifty, is having a knowledge of a school system or knowing a community is always very helpful because it gets to the point where you're trying to work with bringing people in and also trying to find the right match and fit. You can see, we've done over thirty searches throughout Virginia, a lot of them on this side of the mountain. And you all, in reading our profile and reading our proposal, you can see we can do all the sizes here, so you can see that a lot of the surrounding areas we have worked in doing the searches. The team itself, I'd like to tell you, we, we try to pick teams that are matched. I'd like you to know a little bit more about Dr. Harris, some of you know that, if you would, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's my pleasure to be here. Dr. Kastner and I come with extensive, successful experience assisting school boards in finding the right match and fit superintendent. We both are retired superintendents. We have worked together about fourteen years doing over fifty searches. Currently, I am the director of the Virginia Tech School Leaders Institute Aspiring Superintendent's Program. And at least nineteen of the last twenty-seven superintendents appointed in Virginia came through that program. I have knowledge of this community, and we know that community input is critical, and we look forward to working with you as you choose your next superintendent.
I'm a former superintendent from Almarle County, and since that superintendency, I did have the chance to do an interim here ten years ago. One of my things, I prided myself, I was in all twenty of your schools at least five times, and, uh, Jamie and I, I think Penny, if you remember, we talked about your first budget going from a two-page document to something far more comprehensive. So I do have knowledge of the district, but also I'm involved in doing strategic planning. So in this regard, we do have the experience, we do know your community, and now we'd like to talk about how we work in the process. We have to tailor this to each school system. We'll make it as comprehensive as we can, but also tailor it to your needs. The whole issue is to find candidates who are gonna have a match. You're making the decisions. We will advise you of the pros and cons, but in the end, you'll make those decisions. Next slide, please. Our objective, a process that we know works, a process that will help you find your best candidate, and if anything, make it a hard decision for you. The iss- next, go back a second. Another thing, community engagement is critical. You're gonna trust us or whoever you pick to go out into the community and hear what people have to say and report back. That shows a confidence, it shows a transparency, and it becomes important not just for the search, but also when someone is hired, when they do their entry plan and they get involved with the community, it should be the same group of people. And the, also the idea that they know that there's a partnership with that person and the school board. So we wanna try to find highly successful candidates. We wanna do it within the timeline and the budget, and all that's gonna work. Next slide. There are four steps to the search process. First step, specifications, plan out how it's gonna work, the recruitment, assessment, and selection. I'm gonna move pretty quickly through this, but also you have a folder. On the folder, on the left-hand side is again a PowerPoint. It also is a trifold that tells you about BWP, the fact that BWP is a national firm that's done over eight hundred searches. But right now, the importance is the team you have here, and we work mostly in the East Coast. The idea that you want to engage your community, and we'll explain the details of that in just a minute, we wanna talk about the experiences and skills you're looking for, establish a leadership profile, and work with the board in approving each step along the way before we put out vacancy announcements or even organize community engagement. Next slide, please. In the community engagement, please, we'd wanna interview all board members. We would want you to work with us in making sure, we would talk to representative groups throughout the community. Normally, we can do this over a two-day process, and we can actually have over thirty-six meetings. We would have forums. Obviously, we'd wanna have forums not only in the Christianburg area, the Blacksburg area, or whatever areas that you want to make sure that we have access to any people in your community. We also would have an online survey. The online survey certainly is gonna attract participation with over a thousand people. It's gonna involve students, it's gonna involve everyone in the community. In the end, when we do the community engagement, you're gonna probably involve fifteen-hundred to two-thousand people in getting the input on that. Next slide, please. When you're getting into recruitment, the whole idea, and we're gonna talk about this, putting an advertisement out is one thing, but also when you work with a search firm that already people know us, we know that a lot of the searches in Virginia are gonna attract Virginia people. But still, you might wanna do a national search because your goal is to find the best possible person, also people that maybe worked in Virginia at one time. So we have a national website that that'll work, and it's our extensive network that you'll find with over fifty different associates from BWP. One of the things that's gonna make this job easier is who you are. You have a good school system. You have a university. All of these things and the fact that we know that this is an attractive job. Our goal, though, is to try to find candidates, and you'll find that of all the searches, over ninety percent are gonna end up in their second term. So you're looking for longevity, and you wanna try to find that match. You don't want someone just here looking at this district as a stepping stone. You want them to come here because it's going to be a commitment. So when you're looking at all this and trying to find this, all this works towards you. Actually, again, when I was here last time, it was the same time of the year that you started the superintendent process. This is a good time of the year. At least all schools are open now. You're getting to the point also that you're gonna involve in making your decisions so that whoever you decide is gonna be part of the budget process, which will be important. I did that as a superintendent, and you've had that practice doing that here. Regarding assessment and all the information you have, you want no surprises. You want us to make sure we vet candidates that all of a sudden, when someone's name is mentioned, someone's gonna find something we didn't know about. We're not gonna let that happen. You'll look at our track record, you look at our references, it hasn't happened, but we spent careful attention with that. We do advise background checks. We also advise, and we'll get to this, a confidential search. You can attract a larger pool. On the right-hand side, you will see that there are certain questions that will get information, whoever you decide, that'll give us direction on how to do the search. We also get into the fact that we have the timeline, and we have examples of really what community engagement looks like, and also how you end up marketing what your announcement might look like in doing that and making it attractive. Next slide, please. When you're getting to the point of vetting and you're checking all the references, again, our experience helps us read between the lines. Everybody writes a nice resume. Everybody gets pretty good references. And they're probably well-earned, but we wanna make sure, again, that they're earned in a way that there won't be any surprises, and you'll be proud of that. Next slide, please. When you're getting into the selection, we actually will provide information to the board members in training on protocols. We then will advise you on maybe giving you samples of questions you might wanna do. We wanna make sure that in doing the process, it's a two-way street. Candidates are gonna be interviewing you, you're gonna be interviewing the candidates. They're also gonna be watching each of your board meetings, and in some cases, some of those board meetings don't necessarily attract candidates. That doesn't mean that's here, but the point is, you're trying to find a partnership, people that are gonna wanna bring their families here, they're gonna do their homework too, just like you're gonna do their homework when you're gonna see all the information we're gonna have when we give the applications, we'll do deep Google searches, we'll share with you the Google information, we'll have all that information out there so that you'll know everything. And then also, as you get to know your candidates, as you go through not only a first round, but maybe a second round of interviews, you're gonna know everything about them and make the most important decision. And if anything, our goal is to make that decision pretty hard because you have an excellent pool, and you will have an excellent pool. The timeline here, it's in detail, it's on the right-hand side. Everything can get done before, at the end of December. We would recommend that you would make the final decision, go through negotiations to a point that you'd be able to have someone up and running by the end of January, which Lois would work well for you. So the idea that you might wanna have your interim here, and she's doing a great job, the issue is getting your new superintendent and move them along. The timing of having someone involved in the budget process is critical. And also the fact that when you hire someone, well, it might be a while before they might board, it might take thirty days, that doesn't mean that they still can't shadow and come into the district and get to know it better, and at least it's not just a quick turnaround right away. Wayne, would you like to say anything else?
I think this slide speaks to our commitment and the work that you can expect from us, and that is excellence. Because the goal is a fit and match for what Montgomery County needs. That is our commitment. As the board, you are the decision-makers. We make recommendations, we receive input, and then we bring forward to you a pool of candidates that match and fit the profile that you've approved, that we drafted from what we heard as we listened to the board and as we listened to the community. But our commitment is good, better, best, never let it rest until the good is better and the better best. And so when you select BWP and Associates, Dr. Kastner, and me to assist you, you can count on we will bring you the best match and fit to make your job difficult in deciding who your next superintendent is. We're here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you both for that presentation. School board members, who has questions tonight? Who wants to start?
Hi. So you mentioned a confidential, confidential search. So does that mean you're not open to an open search once we get to a certain step in the process?
Ms. Franklin, it's your decision. We are recommending a confidential search in order that you will have the best pool of highly qualified candidates. Because our experience shows that if it's an open search, there are sitting superintendents who will be reluctant to apply because if they don't get the job, they're gonna be, have some difficulty with their current board.
Actually, you did have an open search, and in the open search, the applicant pool is half the applicant pool that we were seeing in a lot of the other searches. That's a choice that you can make because in some cases, your community is gonna like to see and actually weigh in on it. If we go to South Carolina, the three finalists become public, and they have a day in the district, and that's the process in South Carolina. In Virginia, over ninety percent of the school boards make the decision to have a closed search to maximize the pool, because, but it's a choice.
It's your choice.
And each district has to make that choice as you weigh it in as a board.
Thank you.
We will work with you however you decide.
Dr. Gitry?
Uh, thank you so much for the presentation. I have a few questions, I'm just gonna ask, first preliminary question here. So the initial pool that you will, um, try to build for us, how large is that pool? And is it, is it a larger pool, and then we winnow it down? Can you be a little bit more specific on, on that process?
We can anticipate that you'll have thirty to forty applicants. We will use the information that we received from the community engagement process and the board, using the leadership profile that you approve. We will use that to screen that pool, thirty-five, forty, how many ever are in there, and bring then to you the top four to six who match and fit the profile that you've approved based on match and fit. Then you, as a board, determine, do we interview the candidates that we- Then you, as a board, determine, do we interview the candidates that we can demonstrate a match and fit, or do you want to interview others? That's, again, your choice, but we would bring you four to six top candidates that match from that pool.
Okay, great. I'll just ask one more than, and let my fellow board members ask their questions. In terms of transparency in this process, so you do deep dives into all the candidates, do you do just a document dump? Do you make all of the materials available? Do you summarize and provide analysis? Or how do you communicate that wealth of information that you have collected in the process in addition to giving that, us, those top candidates?
Let's say we have 35 candidates. We're going to have a rubric that's going to show how we went through them, and we can share with you how it broke down with each of the candidates and where they fell in the rubric. We'd like not to mention names, but we would answer questions if boards ask. We think boards want to see that whole composite at times, but we also want to keep the confidentiality, too. And we've found that that's a question that comes up pretty often, and we've gone to that, and we kind of, at the point when we go through some of it, can give you some of our rationale where someone is, well, let's say someone is a principal. Well, one of the things that we find to be an effective superintendent is good to have central office experience and actually be on a superintendent's cabinet. There are exceptions, but it don't happen very often. But a lot of this becomes a lot of the experience that we would have to try to get that match and fit, and that's what you're asking us to do, to use that. And, but we should be able to have a rationale to explain how we made our decision.
Right.
That's a good question.
But then after that point, when you've come up with your list of four to six individuals, does the gear shift away from some of that confidentiality where we're able to sift through some of the documentation that you've pulled together? Because I know that this is a question of the community about transparency.
You will have, first off, there's two ways we can go. We can have a drop box where you'll see everything that the applicant has done, or sometimes we can do it in notebooks. It depends on what a board is comfortable with. But you need to have all the information that we had, all the Google searches information. It gets to the point when you have finalists, you need to see what happened with the background check. All that information in order for you to make your best decision, you need to have.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I have another one, but I'm going to let my fellow board members ask their questions.
Ms. Parton?
Hi. Thank you for being here, and thank you for all of the hard work you did in helping us with our strategic plan because that's been phenomenal. And I want to just thank you for the platform that you all use to help us in building that and that process. So I'm going to touch on one of the questions that Dr. Yutri mentioned, and you all had mentioned that you want to find someone who would be a little familiar about the community and kind of know about the happenings here. And at the same time, we still feel like we need to reach out maybe nationally to find the best pool of candidates. So when you all finally do have all these superintendents or future superintendents applying for this position, how do you take those applicants? And how are you looking at how to narrow them down to what you feel like our district's specific needs are to where these are the people that you're going to present to us as a possible superintendent?
As we look at their application, which is an online application, we look at their letter of entries, we look at their resume, we look at their references. We then look at what the profile says you were looking for to determine, how do we reduce that number from 35 to 10?
Yeah.
Kevin and I then have a conversation, and we then make phone calls. So we have an informal conversation with each of those individuals. And that then helps us determine, how then do we check? Not their references, but check people we know who know them that they didn't include. So we're spending time getting information about them, and then we go back and have a formal interview with them, some specific questions that are tied to the profile and what you say you're looking for. And again, going to reduce that number to four to six that we bring to you.
Ms. Mon.
You guys' wealth of experience and knowledge are always impressive, and I sure do appreciate it. And it's not been my first interview for, you know, looking for a superintendent search. I really don't have any questions. You guys have definitely given us multiple means of finding the information that we're looking for, and I know that you guys are mostly experienced and competent, and thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Fesell?
If I could ask a question that builds on what Ms. Parton already asked you about that reference checking process. So when you do identify maybe those colleagues, acquaintances, who are not the listed references, you know, if I put my resume together, I'm putting together people that I ask who feel comfortable talking on my behalf. How do you approach that other group who weren't the listed references but who have working knowledge of the candidate? Like, what is that process like?
I'll give you one example. We were doing a search and had a candidate who had worked as a deputy superintendent in a school district in South Carolina. Turns out, I was in grad school with that person's superintendent. And so I picked up the phone and called and said, X is applying. Can you talk to me about this individual's leadership skills? So we had a conversation. Now, the candidate didn't know that I knew his superintendent. So we are contacting, we have contacts. You heard Dr. Kastner say that there are some 50 BWP associates around the country. But there are also people, Dr. Kastner and I have been in this business a long time. And so we know individuals who are in other places so that if the candidate worked there, we can call and have a confidential conversation, and they give us honest feedback. And so that's how we gather that information.
Also, working in Virginia, in all probability, some of the people in the candidate pool are going to come from Virginia. Well, we've been around for a while in Virginia, and so we know a lot of these people. When you go out of state, then all of a sudden, you won't know as many people, but we still are part of national organizations where we know people. And that has a lot to do with the experience that you have over the years, and so you run into some of these things. But these are good questions, but these are the types of things that have resulted in the track record we have, where we've been able to have consistent feedback on, and develop a trust that when we present people, we can answer the questions that you'll have.
Thank you.
Dr. Yutri?
So we have a very diverse community here with four high schools, four middle schools, 11 elementary schools, and the populations within each of those can be further, have further diversity. How do you evaluate a candidate's sensitivity and their levels of appropriate empathy for historically marginalized communities within our community?
Tell you the truth, that's the work. We might have a superintendent of the year in Iowa that's in a homogeneous school system. They aren't going to be a good match and fit. In the area, when you're talking about addressing the needs of all students and dealing with diversity, dealing with wellness, dealing with all the issues that public schools deal with, any sitting superintendent is going to have a track record on that. And that track record of how they've handled that successfully or not is important. One of the key questions we will be asking, show us how you are addressing the achievement gaps in your district. Are you going north? Are you going south? Are you staying the same? You want someone that has a track record where they can show that they are addressing things like that and are making some strides in going beyond COVID, going beyond all the things. You need to have, they need to have the ability to show the body of their work that would show the evidence where they have been able to have a track record of academic success, not just for the top students, but all students. That's what you're looking for. That's what this district was about. That is what your strategic plan was all about.
Okay. I'll lob in a couple of questions here as well. Dr. Harris, I think you actually answered my first question, but you said that BWP is about 50 employees, is that right?
50 associates around the country who work as associates with BWP doing searches.
Okay, okay. And how many active searches is BWP currently involved with?
He's the director, I can't.
Right now, we are not involved in any other searches. I do know that a lot of our work is in Illinois and the Chicago area, and there's several searches going on. However, in our website, all the searches are identified on there. But as far as for us, we're open right now. It's like, this is when the season starts.
Okay.
In May, I had three searches going on. They're all done successfully.
But we will be all yours.
And that was kind of the emphasis of my question there, right? You know, certainly if you're busy, that means you're very successful, but, you know, we want you all to ourselves, so, okay. Great, thank you very much. Board, any other questions?
So I have one. So you talked about our achievement challenges, which are not, you know, just here in Montgomery County, it's across the country. But there are also challenges that school districts are facing, and students are being attacked for their identities, their sexual identity. How do you make sure we have a superintendent candidate who is going to be empathetic to all of our students and understand where Montgomery County stands with these issues?
As we are doing our research, vetting the candidates, and then interviewing the candidates, there are several things that we're going to be looking for. We're going to be looking for high intention. We're going to be looking for sincere effort. And more importantly, we're going to look to make sure that their leadership accomplishments demonstrate an excellence in everything that they have done related to the achievement gap, related to supporting staff. So we are looking for evidence of that because if they cannot demonstrate that, they are not a match and fit, they will not be in the top four to six that we bring to you.
When we are going to have the individual interviews with the candidates, we will have questions that will address just exactly what you said. We want to see exactly how they're working in their district. You know, it's a tough time right now, not only here in Virginia but other places because the target's moving. And the whole issue is you have to have a superintendent that's going to work with the board, figuring out what you have to comply with or when you have different options. And right now, as you know, across Virginia, different boards are approaching it different ways. So you're looking for someone that can be thoughtful, but in the end, address the needs of each student, all students, not just some.
Any other final questions?
Can I just drill down a little bit? So we've heard some from community members and about concerns. It's a diverse community. We're, we have an election coming up, and the political landscape could be changing in this, in this state in the midst of this search. I wonder if you want to go beyond just the achievement goals and some of, and a lot of this is on process. We want to find the best candidate, but to allay people's concerns, how are you approaching the politics of our moment that can help us through this process, both to allay our community's concerns, but also, you know, I'm looking at the strategic plan that you worked on, we're in a different environment, and so we've had to work hard to defend some of the, some of those commitments. So I don't know if you want it just to go beyond just achievement, but talk to, about the political environment and how that's changed your search process, how it's influenced, and just to lay some of the concerns in the community about this landscape that's going to be, could be changing in the midst of the search.
When we go out and involve ourselves in a community and a community forums, and we record what we hear, and we provide the community engagement report, which will almost verbatim talk about hearing all the different issues, which go way beyond just achievement. I remember when we did, not Spotsylvania, but Stafford County, there were a lot of questions about critical race theory. In fact, in our conversations and report we had, it came up 25 times. So the issue is to allow members of the community to share their thoughts, and you, as a board, are going to need to see all sides of the issue. This is what you deal with every day. Every time you have a board meeting, you're going to have different testimony. If we do this process and we want to be able to make it as inclusive, it also should be nonjudgmental in the fact of getting that information out there. Now, you're experts as school board members in your community, but in this process, by also having that other opportunity and the transparency of hearing people put their say in, looking at the survey and all that, that's all part of what you're going to be looking for when you have the type of leader that you think are going to address not just a common ground, but a ground that has a little bit of, you need a political savvy to work with it, but you also have to figure out someone that can have the common ground that's going to work best for all your kids. It's a good question.
In our research determining who's the best fit and match, we will be able to determine, has that candidate or those four to six, have they worked in an environment that is politically charged, politically divided? And how did they do? How well were they able to carry out their roles and responsibilities and deal with the politics, with the personal agendas that are not centered on what's best for students? So we'll know the answer, whether they come with successful experience, that's part of the match and fit.
This isn't a place to learn on the job. And also, a university community is going to have a lot of, they're going to ask the type of questions you're going to have. That's just the way it is. I had that in Almaral with the UVA, and it's a little different, and everybody's going to be engaged. So it isn't just southwest Virginia. It's going to have that variety of people that are going to have different thoughts on things.
Keep, board, anything else?
Yeah, so for the number of finalists, or bringing six-ish candidates to us, will we also have access to the 30 to 40 applicants that you would expect for us to see?
No. We'll do it in a different way, though. If you're, if I go through that rubric and show why we have separated, and if you have an additional question on one of the ones that I might explain the rubric on, I can give you some additional information. But what you're going to find, if we have a pool of 35, almost half of them aren't going to even come close to the match and fit, and we'll be able to explain that. But if we have someone else that you might like to know more information about, we can do that for you. It also gets to the point, if you have internal candidates, you know your people better than we might, and because of confidentiality, we might not know as much on the reference checks because we want to protect them. So sometimes you might bring up a name or so that we might have to further investigate, and you are going to want more information. We'd like to find a way to get you that information. And so we just come at it a different way as a part, because it's still hard for people when they put their name out. It's a tricky thing that they want to keep that confidentiality, and that's why they're going to, that's why we're getting more applicants in the process we use in Virginia. But we don't just draw a line on that. We could discuss some of the people that might come up when we give you the rubric. And that's come up more often than not, so I understand the question.
Keep, board, anything else? All right, great, thank you so much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next up, Kelsey Wong and Dr. Scott Baker from the Berkeley Group will share a presentation with us regarding their superintendent search process.
Well, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present Chair Hudson, Vice Chair Purcell, and members of the board. My name is Kelsey Wong, and I'm joined by my colleague here, Dr. Scott Baker. And we're here today to share how we can help support you all in selecting your next superintendent. We understand that this is one of the most important decisions that this board will be making, and we are ready to partner with you every step of the way. So a little bit about Berkeley Group. We are a public sector consulting firm based right here in Virginia. We partner with school systems and other public agencies to strengthen operations, improve outcomes, and help support the communities that you all serve. We specialize in strategic planning, executive coaching, executive recruitment, interim staffing, and leadership development across public sector organizations in the Commonwealth of Virginia and beyond. Our firm is rooted right here in Virginia, and we have really strong ties to Montgomery County. Our firm actually began through a friendship that started here. We have several proud Hokies on our team, and our CFO actually lives here, and his children attend the school system. And so we're familiar with the area and deeply committed to this recruitment in your community.
Good evening. I'm sorry, I used to be taller. Hi, Scott Baker. It is a pleasure to be here. Thank you for having us and the opportunity to share with you what we hope that we're able to bring to this process. I am a former superintendent, fairly recent, as are many of the team members that I have. We are a burgeoning group, as Kelsey was just sharing. We, Berkeley Group began 15 years ago. Our education division began three years ago with me. These folks brought me on, and I was really drawn to the focus on building communities and with public education being the center of most communities and needing to be something that, as Berkeley Group, we could, you know, help to grow. And having been a recent superintendent and in listening to the last presentation and some of the questions, I would add that one of my motivations for not only being involved in this particular type of work with Berkeley Group, but in general, you see on the slide that we, we provide a range of supports to school systems and leaders from strategic planning to executive coaching. And executive coaching, not only with individual leaders like superintendents and principals, but also with their teams. Because we believe that, not to be corny, but that we want to be a leadership lighthouse during a time that seems to be an unending storm. And as you all just were expressing, this very extraordinary time that just is not only politically complex, but often confounding in terms of how to make decisions. And so we want to be that partner for leaders, including school boards. And so we have had the opportunity through entry points like strategic planning, executive coaching, to be able to work with school boards and in retreats, and helping them in their governance alongside their superintendents. So again, we are really excited to be able to be in this work now. And so again, thank you for having us.
We have successfully completed recruitments for public sector positions through, throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia. While this would be our first superintendent search, we bring extensive experience in public education and have partnered with a dozen or so school systems in Virginia. Our model combines the structure and rigor of public sector recruitment with the collaborative and values-driven approach of educational leadership consulting. We're confident that this blended experience positions us in being able to identify and attract top-tier educational talent that fits your organization and community. So this is our recruitment team. Our search team includes experienced former superintendents and public sector leaders who bring direct experience with hiring and leadership transitions. Drew Williams, who's to the left of the screen, he's our CEO, and he'll be the principal in charge, providing contract management and oversight. Dr. Scott Baker will be the project lead. He will be the point of contact for you all and lead facilitator. Dr. Rob Benson, who's also a former superintendent, will be providing project support. And then Janelle Richards, who has recruitment experience in other school systems, will be helping develop the visually attractive recruitment profile for you all and providing backup support to the team. Just one more thing to note. You know, our team, we're not headhunters. I'd say that may be a little bit different about us. We're facilitators, educators, and advisors who understand what it takes to lead a successful school division. So why Berkeley Group?
I do want to promise you that, although I know some of my very respective colleagues that just presented, I promise we didn't compare slides or take anything from them in advance. So when I see some of these same themes, I hope you know that, that we didn't have a chance to compare notes, but I have, you know, profound respect for both of them and what they do. I, I think we've, we've talked about that, that our experience is right now primarily on the county government side. But one of the things that I think that my colleagues and I bring to this process that is unique is that we have been recent candidates as well. We have an idea of that candidate experience from this time. We also have been superintendents through COVID, through this time that we just have been talking about that is so extraordinarily challenging for leaders, especially public sector leaders like school boards and superintendents. And so we believe that we have a good sense of how to engage folks in that process. We do have a deep understanding of school leadership and operations. We've been superintendents on our team for over a half a century. But my colleague and I, who are on this team, both served 10 years, and we served at the exact same time. Our team is rooted in Virginia, and Kelsey was talking about that as a strength. And so my ties, again, on the personal side, I was born in Roanoke, Virginia. I attended Radford University as my undergraduate. Yay Highlanders, go Highlanders. And I have really kind of grown up in this area where my parents and grandparents were all from southwest Virginia. And so I have a deep connection here. But our team in general is really well-versed on Virginia educational policy, on the history, on the current folks who are serving, the challenges. We keep up with it. We try to stay deeply connected to the field and what is happening, so that again, we can bring that experience to bear in this process. This, being trusted by school divisions and localities, we really begin, our kind of backward design for all of the supports that we try to provide tends to begin with the end in mind. What are your needs? Not, here's what we provide in a sales pitch, but what are the needs? And as we think about Montgomery County Public Schools and your superintendent, and I believe just this is going to be your third superintendent in about four, five years, which means that certainly stability and, you know, that sense of being able to have someone that you can grow into the future with is very important. And so we want to be not only a trusted partner in the area of recruitment, but we come, we want to be a full-service partner. We want to be a part of perhaps onboarding a new superintendent, be a part of executive coaching. We don't want to just get you a candidate or a superintendent and leave. We really want to work and serve alongside you moving forward. And then finally, and again, I know this has come up a lot, but that sense of organizational, community, cultural fit is something that we will focus on. What are the needs that are revealed in the profile that Kelsey's going to highlight in just a second? What are those characteristics that you are looking for? Those, those personal dispositions, those professional skills that are most needed in Montgomery County right now? Those are the things that we are going to be focused on. And when we get questions later, I might reveal a little bit more about our perspective in terms of the types of leaders that we want to help school systems find that is kind of a non-negotiable at the outset. But again, we want to find the right person for this moment, and hopefully someone that would be with you for several years.
So our proposed process, we've proposed a six-phased approach that we've detailed in, in our proposal, but I'd be, I'd like to walk through it a little bit with you all. So phase one is our kickoff and planning. During this phase, we intend to have a kickoff meeting to finalize the project schedule and to find the stakeholder engagement plan. From there, we'll move on to stakeholder engagement and profile development, where we'll co-design stakeholder engagement to help us craft a visually attractive profile of your ideal candidate. This visually attractive profile will include the ideal traits, qualifications, experience of your next superintendent. Moving on to recruitment and outreach, we will do a national recruitment and target candidate, and targeted candidate outreach. And then we'll also have up to a four-week application period. We will facilitate application reviews, comparing candidate materials with the recruitment profile, that ideal candidate, and conduct preliminary video interviews with candidates that match that recruitment profile. We'll conduct background checks and present a shortlist presentation to the board. Moving on to final interviews and selection, we will facilitate and support the final interview process, conduct reference checks, and support you on your board selection, and then also help with contract negotiation. Finally, we will help with appointment transition, helping draft via public announcement, support transition planning, and then we also offer optional onboarding support as well. So each step of this process is designed to be both collaborative and transparent.
Just kind of highlight very briefly, I know that a big focus for tonight is we all, I think it was shared earlier by some of my colleagues, that we all have similar ways that we traditionally would engage the community. When we talk about authentic community engagement, it means that we want to make sure that all groups are represented and that they have that input. And that if there's anything that should take longer, it's the development of that ideal candidate profile. It's to make sure that we are fully engaging that community, which means we will do as much as we can, as much as you want, to make sure that all of the folks that need to have input, that community voice is vibrant, and is not just during one phase, but that we keep it all throughout this process. And so I share that authentic community engagement, because we also make that a feature of everything that we do with Berkeley Group, whether it's strategic planning, whether it's coaching. We are always bringing in stakeholders and making sure that they are a part of any important process. And as has been alluded to several times already this evening, there is no more important process for you as the Montgomery County School Board than making sure that you have the best superintendent for your kids and for your community. That's still me. And so what can you expect? I think that you can expect a tailored process, one that is really, again, beginning with that background of what are your needs? And even though we had an RFP to respond to, we had a sense of what that might be, that first opportunity to spend time with you, understanding individually and collectively what you believe those needs are, is what's going to drive our process. Making sure that you feel like you are always, you know, that we're always present. Maybe not always onsite, but is onsite as much as possible, so that you feel like we are walking through this process with you. And that as much contact and communication as you need, that we will provide that. Obviously, Kelsey just outlined kind of the full service from the beginning to the end, and that we want to, you know, not just be here to say goodbye, but hopefully to say hello to continuing to provide support. And then finally, this whole approach is centered on your community, your stakeholders. But as a former superintendent and educator, the most important thing is your kids, your students, your, your young people in this community. It's, it's so vital that they have a leader that puts them first.
So while we specialize in recruitment, we're not just a recruitment firm. Our goal is to conduct a successful recruitment and to become a long-term partner with Montgomery County Public Schools. We're honored to be considered. Our team is ready to begin immediately. Thank you all for your time, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you all have for us.
Okay, thank you both for presenting tonight. School board, who has any questions or comments? Who wants to start?
So I want to be clear. You all said this is your first superintendent search.
This would be, yes, me.
Okay, this would be. And, excuse me, you talked about your strong ties to Virginia, and particularly this area. So your search, would that be confined to Virginia, the southwest region, what?
No, we would be doing a state and national search, is what we proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, me too.
Change of order this time. Dr. Mountri?
Yeah, so during your presentation, I'm paraphrasing because I didn't write down the exact words. You said that the type of person that they are, that you would be searching for would be non-negotiable. What did you, what is that type of person that is non-negotiable?
Yeah, I, you know, as we are in this process, one of the things that we also have the opportunity is to try to, to train, to nurture, and build the type of leadership in the public sector. We want to be a, a player in that, not just now, but over time. Because as we hear everywhere we go, there is a desperate sense, a need for leadership. And so when we begin to say, well, what is the type of leadership that's needed, that folks are so desperate for? I think in public schools, for me and our team, the non-negotiable is what is, what is best for students. And so a non-negotiable, and so this may sound a bit on the, to direct harsh side or even judgmental side, but usually one of the first things that I share with, whether it's incoming superintendents or executive leaders, when you are leading in schools, and your first priority needs to be students, then the best way to start is to look in the mirror and, and remind yourself that it's not about you. And too often, we're seeing leadership in a variety of areas, in the private and the public sector, that is often about the leader, whether it's about the, the legacy of the leader, about the convenience of the leader. And we are very passionate about making sure that we help you identify leaders that have all of the various characteristics that meet that profile. But we doubt that the profile is ever going to say someone that's egotistical or self-centered. And that is not about students is their number one priority. And the needs of the whole child, not just academic needs, certainly closing achievement gaps is important. But sometimes in order to get there, especially in some communities, they need to make sure that they are building relationships with the broader community, and that they are meeting the needs of some, for some of our kids, it's at the bottom of Maslow's, where we have to first make sure those needs are met before we can get to raising those academic achievement standards. So I, I hope that, I wasn't trying to be, you know, vague or, but I'm glad that you were intrigued by that statement, because we really do believe that we need more and more service-oriented, but highly talented and skilled leaders in the public sector, and particularly, you know, where my passion is, my father was a superintendent of over 20 years. And then I vowed I would never do that, and I was called to do it. So I am a big believer in the impact and the power of the superintendency when it is directed first on the needs of students and the needs of the community.
Thank you. Ms. Purcell?
Thank you for being here tonight. So kind of to build a little bit off of Ms. Franklin's question and acknowledging that this would be your first superintendent search, but that you're used to other public sector searches. but that you're used to other public sector searches, how, what strategies do you feel like you would borrow from those other public sectors searches for county administrators or city administrators? And what do you see doing differently because this is education? Like what, what are you eager to try as you would potentially start this search?
Well, I'm going to first speak to a lot of what we have learned. And I know this is probably not the way you're supposed to do it when you're in a public competition. But I have learned a great deal from the gentlemen that have already presented to you. I have learned a great deal from being a candidate, from spending a lot of time with folks who have kind of, you know, worked and grown in this process over time. And so I think a lot of those best practices are going to be a part of what we already do. But some of the things that I think, Kelsey and I have talked about this quite a bit, and this is no offense to county administrators or folks on the county government side, but I can say pretty confidently that in terms of public facing, your public and your communities tend to fixate and focus a lot more on who their next superintendent is going to be than who their next county administrator is going to be. Not because the county administrator role isn't really important, but because we involve families and children, their education, their future, all of their various needs. Think of all the things that schools provide to families. And so I think that the community engagement aspect of it, one of the things I think for this particular, not only with Montgomery County, but anyone we would work with is we would want that community engagement to be extensive, to be vibrant, and again, to be very inclusive of all of the important stakeholders that inhabit this community. Anything else that?
Ms. Wong.
Thank you so much for coming. It sounds like you guys have a great forward future looking into doing this. I agree with a lot of your statements. And, but I think some of my colleagues have been asking, you've answered the questions that I probably had in mind too. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Pardon.
Thank you for being here this evening. So excited to hear you know so much about this side of the state and that you have ties to our community. I actually have a senior at Rafford University this year, so when you say Highlanders, I'm like, oh, Highlanders. So glad to hear that you guys are so familiar with this area. So I think what my question is going to mainly pertain to is because you do have such familiarity with this area and you probably know exactly what's been mentioned before about the very distinct different districts, which makes the superintendent's position very challenging. It makes school board seats very challenging. It's just very challenging, period. So for the candidates that you might compile to bring forward to us, what would be something that you would be looking for with the candidates to bring to us that you would see would fill the needs with what we have as far as our district's needs and what you feel is best for our kids in this area? To where you would pull them and say, hey, I think this person might actually be a good fit for us to move forward on this superintendent search.
Okay, Kelsey's letting me take all these questions and I didn't know that was going to happen. I think that, I don't want to go backwards first, but we're always going to, you know, we don't have the development of the profile for nothing. You know, so I don't want to, again, get ahead of the process and say that, you know, part of what you are, you have already laid out this evening in terms of those needs, as we get, you know, more precise in terms of what that candidate looks like, I think it's going to be easier for us to know exactly what we're looking for. But in terms of, if I were just to go off of, you have a diverse community, you have some complex needs. I would imagine when you have that, my experience is that it can also bring some conflict. It can bring some discomfort and it can bring a sense of, for some groups to feel not just marginalized, but to feel unsupported or to feel alienated and not a part of where the school division is going. One of the things that I have often told candidates, I used to work with folks on how to interview. And I said, your best interview is the work that you're doing. Not that you can't come in and express it and articulate it better, but your best, your best argument is what kind of work are you doing right now that is visible, that is impactful? And I would want someone in this case that, or to help you have someone that would be able to effectively engage the community. You know, what we do in this process is to model that from the get-go. But process-wise, how does this person work? Are they working in a way that they are consistently engaging all of those stakeholders as part of a systemic process? Not that they just have sort of token committees, but that they bring a genuine, authentic sense that I want to hear from people and I want them to inform and be a part of decision-making. And not just, you know, and big decisions too, not just decisions that everybody can weigh in on, but decisions that may be pivotal. You know, I always say the best decisions are ones that are really well-informed by a lot of important voices and the voices of who it impacts. So we'd really want someone who has demonstrated that and it's visible, not only in their references, but it's visible in what we are able to learn about them in their roles.
And I just want to add one thing, it's not a question, but I do want to commend you in making the statement that you are looking for someone who put kids first because honestly, that's what they need to be doing and that's what it's all about. So thank you so much for making that a priority and making sure that that's at the top of what you're looking for for a candidate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Gertie.
Great, thank you as well for coming out. I'd like to ask you a question, not related to the presentation, but some of the other information that we've received. And in the information we received, it talked about your vetting process and that you look at four like professional references and there's a shortlist there. And then you offer as an additional service, a kind of a deeper dive. And there are some specific tools that you use. And I wondered, I was like, what's the distinction here? Why aren't some of these, some of these services built into that search? Because, you know, the last thing you want as a board member is you go through all this process, you hire a superintendent and then there's a surprise. And so thinking critically about this process, like how deep do you go? Can you maybe talk to that vetting process and how deep you actually go? And why isn't that built into the core service because of how important that is?
Are you speaking to the finalist assessments, I believe, like the DISC assessment and the EQI? As optional services that we can provide?
Yeah, there was the finalist assessment that talks about, you know, attributes, values and the DISC indices, the advanced insights. There's that little section there and I was like, why, you know, why is that an additional service? That's not just core to what you do in the search?
Not every community desires that or organization desires that, but that's something we can definitely include into this process if that is a desire for you. You know, our vetting process not only includes a review of application materials, we do full background checks, we do reference checks. We also reach out to people within the professional network since we are so plugged in and connected. And so that's kind of our typical vetting process. But if you all would desire those additional assessments, we'd be happy to include that in the process.
So what's the difference? What are the, what's the additional vetting that you do that's the additional service? The optional, what you laid out?
Adding in those assessments if you wanted those, like, emotional intelligence assess, the EQI is the emotional intelligence assessment. And then the DISC assessment kind of shows the personality and how the candidate may respond in certain situations. It's more personality-based versus related to qualifications, traits, things of this nature, experience.
Okay, great. Were you going to?
I was just going to add from my perspective on the superintendent search side, I don't think that's usually something that's a normal part of kind of a core service that I'm familiar with. And I think one of the reasons that it's not in there isn't because it's so much an extra as it is that, you know, sometimes people don't necessarily, if you ever think of going in for an interview and some people say you come in for an interview and you sit with a panel and you answer questions. Other times, there may be a requirement that you come in and you have developed this in-depth presentation that you need to first present and then you answer questions. And so some of it is, we want to make sure that we tailor it to what you need. Some folks say, we don't want to go through this kind of battery of assessment kind of questions. We want to get right to other types of things. So I don't think it's meant to be excluded as much as it is, we want to make sure that it's something that you want.
Okay, great. Thank you. I guess I'll ask, should I ask my second question that'll be the last? So I'm going to pose to you the same question I asked of the last firm about our political environment and its impact in this search. And so you heard the question, I won't reiterate my question, but how can you give confidence to our community that you won't shy away from these complexities? And how does it change or impact the process? Can you basically answer that same question?
Yeah, that's an easy one. No, I'd actually, if I could ask one clarifying point about your question. When you say what we won't shy away from, can you be more specific?
So you're going to be doing a lot of listening, you know? You're going to hear from our community, you're going to hear very diverse opinions. And so I know in the information you're going to gather, but you know, like I said, that there are people, concerns that are in our community that certain values, core values that we have in MCPS. They want to make sure that in this environment that they're protected, that we're going to have a superintendent that stands for those values. And so, and it's kind of connected to the first question about those additional services that get kind of, not just the qualifications of the candidates, but some of that emotional intelligence. And so the one question is actually related to the other is that, like, how do you, how do you address? Because like you said, families are, people are invested in that superintendent more than some of these other offices in these communities because families are so central. And so right now, we're in a very charged environment, so I'm just curious of how you would, how you address that and how that factors in. I don't have a specific point that I want to make there.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to kind of take it a piece at a time. One, I think that having, and I work with leaders every day that are going through it and I'm seeing how, you know, this, there's a couple of things that, and we're going to just, I'm going to be very candid here. In order to thrive, you have to survive in leadership, just as you do on the board. In order to keep serving, you have to make decisions about how you navigate wholesale issues from, in situations seasonally. But I think when it comes to what we're going to be doing in terms of listening and reflecting the information that we get, the consensus that we get from the community, we're going to be very transparent about what we heard. We're not going to create a profile that paraphrases, that sort of says, well, it's sort of this. We will be very clear that this is what we're hearing as a consensus. And we will even make sure that certain issues that may not have come up frequently are still reflected. So that what we want, as I said earlier, is to help you find a superintendent that will be a superintendent for all students and all families. And so we will be pushing anyone who's part of that candidate pool to make sure through the questions that we ask, through the vetting process, to be able to demonstrate that they will be there to confront challenges. They will be there to support all, you know, I have seen this happen and some of it is a little beyond your control even at times. People are looking for a fight and there isn't anything you can do unless you're completely on their side. That's what I have witnessed and continue to witness. What I think is that you can make sure that the majority of your diverse community feels like that they have a superintendent that cares about them and cares about how they feel about issues and is not biased in any way. But I do think that when it comes to making decisions that are in the best interest for students, you're going to want someone that has courage, but also isn't just making those decisions in isolation, but someone who works with the board to be unified in the areas that are most important to students and families.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right, great. And I'll throw in the same couple of questions I asked earlier. Can you tell me the size of your, of your organization, how many employees?
Seventy, seventy-four potentially this week.
We'll count those two?
We'll count them.
And, you know, you mentioned this would be your first superintendent search, but how many other active searches do you have going on right now?
We have four going on currently, but this would be the only one that our team is working on.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, Board, any other questions?
Yes, so I'm not sure if I heard correctly there. You were saying that, talking about the community and superintendent, looking for a superintendent or that the majority of the community feels represented by the superintendent? Did I hear that correctly?
If I said it like that, you didn't. What I was, I think, alluding to is that there are going to be individuals in every community that the only way to have an alignment is to demonstrate 100% agreement with their perspective. I've seen that in this environment unlike any previous era that I've been a part of. So I don't know that it's possible, maybe, maybe you do, for 100% of the people to believe that your next superintendent is completely aligned with how they see things, how they believe, what they believe, what should be done in terms of the future direction of the school system. And I'm talking not just families, but I'm talking about even community members. I do find that would be a really extraordinary task to have 100% of the folks with you. When I say the majority, I mean that they know that the superintendent cares for all students and that the majority of folks feel as though they have that connection with the superintendent and that the superintendent is going to be doing his or her best to advocate for all of them. And so it wasn't meant to be, well, it's okay if we miss some. That was not what I was trying to communicate.
And along the same lines, when looking and evaluating superintendents, how do you, how do you evaluate that they are sensitive with appropriate empathy to historically marginalized communities via, on basis of race, sex, gender identity, other historically marginalized communities as well?
I think a lot of it is, again, not only the listening that we will do from the Board and the community, but making sure that is part of the process, the interview processes. And we would also do screening interviews prior to giving you an initial recommended list. And we wouldn't necessarily already have in our mind that it's going to be a certain number. A lot of it would be dependent upon what's the overall quality of the applicant pool. And if you feel like you have time and you say, we'd like to have more than six or more than eight, then that might be possible if we feel like it's going to be beneficial for you to go through that level of vetting. But we would make sure that throughout the process, that we are getting to some of those very important types of questions and getting a sense of not only their responses to the questions, but as I shared earlier, the best evidence is how have you done managing those kinds of situations or working with those kinds of issues in your current or previous leadership posts? And one of the things that I think is almost impossible to do, we can sometimes learn new skills, but when you share with us things like empathy, that's not something that you turn on and off like a switch. Usually there is evidence, historical evidence, that you have demonstrated that. you have demonstrated that and, and different ways in which it's been demonstrated in various leadership roles. So we would be looking very closely at that. And some of what we would follow up, being that that's a very important thing to the school board, we would follow up with those types of questions even in talking to references as we're vetting the candidates.
Thank you.
So you talked very early on about your process and how after a superintendent was selected, that you just didn't go away. You were still here to help with the onboarding. What does that mean?
Well, we'd say, we'd like to. That's really, would be up to you. It would be up to the school board. But what we would like to be able to provide is we have, we would have been invested in this community with this board for several months. So to help the superintendent, certainly I know they would have other mentors and other kinds of support, but being that we have already worked with you, to be able to help them get a sense of what is their, you know, what is their immersion process into the division look like? Can we help you in terms of kind of thinking through that? Now, certainly that's gonna be one of the questions is what is, what are your first hundred days gonna look like and that sort of thing. But we can maybe work alongside them. I, I have found in working with superintendents today, more than ever, and it doesn't matter whether they've been serving for one year or whether they've been serving for 10 years, we need thought partners. We need folks that can give us different perspectives and different ideas of how to best move forward. And in terms of getting acclimated to the community, to the work, we could provide some recommendations and be there as sort of a, an executive coach in those early stages. So it's really a, a matter of how, what the scope of that would be or how much would really be dependent upon how the board feels about the process. And we could certainly work with the superintendent incoming for as long as is needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board, any other questions? Okay, great. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
And next up, Barry Carroll from McPherson and Jacobson will share a presentation with us regarding their superintendent search process.
So Board, let me say thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight to, to speak with you about our process at McPherson and Jacobson. Just start by saying wow. You're probably gonna hear some of the same things that have been said again. And I have a great deal of respect for the other two firms as well. I like to do it a little bit differently than just, I'm not a big fan of PowerPoint. They're required. I get it. You're gonna look at PowerPoint. But as I go through this PowerPoint, if you have questions, please don't wait till the end. If you have something you'd like to ask, please do. I like to develop a rapport, a relationship with those individuals that I'm working with. And so you can feel honest and feel transparent. And I can tell you, that's what we hang our hat on at McPherson and Jacobson, is transparency. We're gonna be open, honest, transparent with you, with the candidates, with your communities when they ask difficult questions. We may not have all the answers, but we're gonna provide you with the information that we have. Again, my name is Barry Carroll. I'm from Alabama. As we say there, sometimes, I'm not from around here. Everybody else seems to be from around here. So you don't know me. You know nothing about me. So let me tell you just a little bit about me personally. Not that that matters, but I'd love to hear about you personally. If we're gonna work through a superintendent search together, I'd like to know more about you. And I want you to know about me, so you know how I think and so what I'm thinking. I graduated from public school, public high school, firm believer in public schools, always have been. My family's public school graduates. My children, public school graduates. I attended, I'm a little different in some, some areas. I, I attended Alabama A&amp;M University in Huntsville, Alabama. It's HBCU. I was one of the only white guys on the football team. I played football there for four years. It's one of the greatest experiences I've ever had. It dramatically changed my life and my future. As I was growing up, my dad would always say, son, I don't have my education. But if you want to change your life to have it better than we have it, get your education. And he pushed me to do that. And so I got my degree from Alabama A&amp;M, graduated in four years, lived on campus for four years, played football for four years, left there and went to the University of Alabama, where I completed my graduate, my master's degree, and then went on later to get my doctorate in administration. I was in education in Alabama for 30 years as a teacher, started as a coach and a teacher in the classroom, assistant principal, principal, director, just right up the line, like most, a lot of educators do. Became assistant superintendent and served the last 10 years as a superintendent. I've been a part of this work for a long time. It's dear to my heart. And as the others have said, this decision that you're gonna make is gonna be the, maybe the most difficult, but certainly the most important decision you're gonna make as a school board. So I encourage you to think through this, think critically about it. I know you will. Be passionate about it. Be empathetic. It sounds to me, as I listen to you speak tonight, that you're thinking about the right things. You know, it's easy to say, it's all about the kids. Everybody says that. Well, it's all about the kids until they have to take action. And then sometimes actions don't reflect that it's all about the students. So as we, if we have the opportunity, and I don't want to say anything disparaging about the other companies because I know they do great work, but we do too. We're passionate about what we do. We care about, even though I'm not from Virginia and I'm not from here, I care about the students here already, even if we don't get this search. I care about what happens to them and what happens to your school district. As I've already said, I don't particularly like PowerPoints, but I, I guess I'm required to do it. So here we go. If we go to the next slide, please. I'm gonna break this presentation down in a, a couple of things. And I move about. I apologize. I can't stand still when I'm in front of a mic, so please forgive me. Let me tell you a little about us, the search team, what makes us different or what we believe makes us different, our five phases and how those, and what the, what's the procedures in each one of those. And you're, the board's investment and then professional support. So again, again, here's some of those same things that have already been said, great things that have been said. And we do those same things and do things a little bit differently as well. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. You all know who you are, so. About us, next slide. So we don't take this lightly. We believe that every student, every student in your district, no matter race, gender, ethnicity, that every student in your district deserves and entitled to a high-quality education. I know you believe that too, as board members, or you wouldn't be sitting there. And that's really dependent on quality leadership. Leadership by the superintendent, leadership by the board, leadership by the community leaders. Superintendent's position is so, so vital. Next. Our mission is to ensure each search results in a high-quality leadership, sustainable and sustainable outcomes. You may say, well, and you, I know you're gonna ask me this, so I'll go ahead and tell you. Have you ever done a search in Virginia? Yes, I have. I was the lead consultant on Roanoke City. I don't know if I can, she wouldn't mind, but helped them find, I personally recruited that superintendent to apply for that position. I called her and I said, you need to take a look at this. And she said, I'm not interested. And I said, well, let me convince you. And so the conversations went back and forth because I thought she would be a great fit. And as it's turned out, she was a great fit. They selected her. I didn't pick her and say, hey, this is who you need to pick. She was one of the finalists and they picked her. It's my understanding that she has since become the Virginia State Superintendent of the Year. So she's pretty good. As a superintendent, I used to be a part of not only state organizations, but national organizations, AASA, very involved in that, ERDI, very involved in that, urban superintendents. A number of those national organizations where I made connections through the years, where I still stay in touch with those individuals and know those individuals. And so when we recruit, and that's what we do, we recruit talent. That's what it's all about. Recruiting talented people who can come here and have the ability to lead your district if they're selected. Next. Let me go back. I'm sorry. Let me, I apologize. I started telling you, Roanoke was one, Norfolk, Virginia. I was the lead on that as well. We've recently done Lynchburg. I was not on that because I was on another search. I've done searches in North Carolina. I've just finished Cumberland County in North Carolina, which is Fayetteville, 50,000 students in that district. Fulton County, Georgia, 100,000 students in that district. I did that search as well. Shreveport, Louisiana, did that search. Troup County, Georgia, and the list goes on. I've worked with the Tennessee State Department of Education and filling positions. And Albemarle County Assistant Superintendent Position as well. So been involved in all of those. And as you'll see, as I go through the presentation, that generally when the individual is hired, that is selected by the board, that we put in front of the board, they stay because we have thoroughly vetted them to make sure that they're a good fit. And that's so important. We're well-established. We're a leading national search firm. Next. Nationwide network of over 130 consultants. You'd say, well, do you know all of them? I do not. I have a list of them. Not met them all, met a lot of them and worked with them, most, not most of them, but a few of them as we conduct searches. Next. We're national recruiters, local consultants to support searches. We recruit, as I said, we recruit talent. I know who the talent is. I know where it is. I know individuals that are rock stars in their districts, be they're a sitting superintendent or somewhere else down the line. If I'm having trouble finding those individuals, I have a rolodex of superintendents, former superintendents, associations that we get in touch with. We contact and say, here's the district, here's the characteristics of the district, here's what they're dealing with. Do you know anyone who might be a good fit for that particular district? So we have a lot of conversations with a lot of people about selecting individuals who are, who are not only talented, but I like to call them rock stars. We went to Norfolk. We presented four, we presented four candidates there. And I won't say which board member because you may know these individuals. This board member came up to me and said, tell me this, how are we going to pick one out of that four? And I said, that's your problem. We brought them to you. We'll tell you everything about them and I'll get to that. I, I didn't, really didn't respond that way. I just said, that's something that you as the board are gonna have to decide. You'll have to make that decision as to who you think is the best fit. Next. Because we don't hire superintendents. That's not our job. I'm not gonna hire the next superintendent. You are, hopefully. We'll put the individuals in front of you who we think best fit your district. We customize the search process to meet each district's need, meaning it's our process, but your search. So as we're going through the search and we explain it and we say, this is what we're doing, this is how we're doing, and you say to us, can we adjust that and do that a little bit differently? Is there something we can do? Can we do this, for example, whatever that might be? We work with you on that. That is not a problem. So we'll adjust along the way if needed. Next. Authentic engagement of stakeholders. Others have mentioned that as well. We do that. We get with you and identify stakeholder groups that you think it's important for us to meet with, whether it's employees, the different levels of employees. It could be community leaders. It could be government leaders, could be the clergy, whoever you decide that you want to have input from, then we will talk with, with those stakeholder groups. Next. Track record of successful placements. And I'll get to that. I think it's in the next slide, but go ahead to the next slide. And all the, I started with McPherson and Jacobson in 2018. And I've done quite a few searches since that time. All the searches that I've done, the person who's been placed, they're all still there to this day, except one. In Georgia, in South Georgia, he fulfilled his four-year contract and because of a family situation, he, he retired. He wasn't bought out. He wasn't run off. He didn't go to jail. He was in great standing when he left the district. So we've conducted over 1,000 successful superintendent searches in 45 states with over 130 consultants across the US. Almost 80% of the candidates that have been hired remain in the same position in the last five years. Almost 60% of the candidates remain in the same position in the last 10 years. And 40%, believe it or not, are still there after 15 years. Hard, hard to believe, but that's the truth, especially when the, the longevity of a superintendent's tenure now is somewhere between two and a half and three years. For them to stay that long is amazing. Next. This is the consultant team. Ralph Ferry is a, a former superintendent from New Jersey. He'll be working with me on the search. Dr. Deborah White, he lives in, just outside of Atlanta, moved, just moved to Atlanta recently. Dr. Deborah White, she and I did Cumberland County together. She's fantastic. She's from Atlanta as well. Has not been a superintendent, but has, brings a different perspective as, as she has been assistant superintendent of a very large district in, in Atlanta, excuse me, in Georgia, but also has worked in the State Department level. So she understands from that level as well. And then myself and then Dr. Steve Joel, who's a former superintendent of Lincoln, Nebraska, who's been a part of this company for, since its inception. And he's, he's fantastic, a great advisor, and he'll work with us as well. Next. What's our difference? Again, I've mentioned some of these. Next slide. We're trusted by districts of all sizes. We've done, as I've said, I did Fulton County, 100,000 students. Did Cumberland County, 50,000. I've done districts that had 10,000. I'll go ahead and answer your question now. I'm the lead on the, on a search in Craven County, North Carolina, about 12,000 students. That's New Bern, North Carolina. And we're in the middle of that search now. But we're trusted. They know our name. You say McPherson and Jacobson, people know who you're talking about. So we hope we can build the trust with you as well. Next. Sustainability of leadership. I've already covered that. When they come and you select them based on our recommendation, then they generally stay. Next. High degree of stakeholder involvement. I've already said that one. Next. Oh, and by the way, we interview each one of you as a board member, generally by Zoom. We'll just have a conversation. We'll ask you some questions and you tell us. You just feel your guts on the table because it's confidential. We're not gonna tell anybody who said what. If you said, I don't like that traffic light down there by the high school, we're gonna put it in the report, but we're not gonna say you said it, okay? Whatever that might be. Tailored search protocols to district needs. We're gonna make sure that we're meeting you. Tailored search protocols to district needs. We're gonna make sure that we're meeting your needs, what you're looking for in a superintendent. Next. Next slide. Transparency. I mentioned that. We're very transparent. We tell you everything. I was on the phone with individuals from the other district I'm working with yesterday, a lot today, some. Communicate constantly. That's what we do. That's what I do as the lead. Constantly, and you will appoint a point of contact, by the way, whoever that may, might be. Ms. Hudson, I don't know who that would be, but if it's you, for example, you and I will be passing information back and forth on a daily basis. You will know where we are. Now, it may be by email, maybe by text, it could be by phone, you know, according to how urgent it is. But we're gonna communicate with you. Might as well say that about the superintendent right now. You need a superintendent who can communicate not only with you and build rapport with you and get along with you, but also get along with others. And be a leader who can build a team, a unified team, who can move forward. Next. We work for you. I don't have a bunch of my buddies sitting out here in the parking lot waiting for me to tell them, yeah, we, yeah, we, we got it. And, you know, you're gonna be one of the final four. I don't do that. I don't do that. I have them call me and I say, you certainly can apply. And if you meet the standard, then certainly I think the board might consider you. But I, there are no guarantees. We don't recycle candidates. We're looking for the very best. We work for you, not for superintendents. Next. Extensive education partnerships. And I'll talk about that in just a minute. Next. We stand on the strength of our references. Call any of those I've mentioned or any others and just say, hey, McPherson Jacobson did a search with you and Barry Carroll was a part of that. Tell me, how, how did he do? How did the firm do? Did they do what they say they would do? That's a pet peeve of mine. If I tell you I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do it. If you ask me and I say, yes, that's, we'll do that, then we're gonna do that. Next. Five phases of McPherson and Jacobson search. We'll run through these quickly. I kinda call this the process. I'm from Alabama, I'm sorry. There's a guy in there, used to coach down there called Nick Saban, and he talked about that. And every word, everything that came out of his mouth was about the process, the process, the process. We don't have the process in Alabama anymore, but at McPherson and Jacobson, we have the process and this is it. Five phases. Next. The first phase, we're gonna meet with you and here's what we're gonna talk about, and you're gonna guide us with this. We're gonna identify the desired characteristics of the candidate. What are you looking for? Identify stakeholder groups and feedback protocol, how we're gonna exchange that information. Establish the search timeline and critical dates in the timeline. Determine salary range. Now, we don't have to, we don't, some districts should say to be determined or based on experience and those types of things. That's, we'll work with you on that. Craft a job posting and vacancy announcement. Next. Phase two. We will meet with all the stakeholders, as we've mentioned, partner groups and distribute online surveys. Develop promotional materials. We will distribute, receive and catalog all application materials that come in and actively recruit applicants. Again, that's, should have a star by it. That's what we do. Next. Phase three, we read all the applications, vet all the applications, vet each person to determine where they stand. I think someone else in one of the other groups said it earlier. Majority of people who apply, maybe not the majority, but a, a good number of those who apply are really not gonna meet the criteria. We're gonna know that quickly and they'll be eliminated quickly and we can tell you why. We contact references, reference checks and background investigations. We invite selected candidates to, to do a taped video interview. So what we do is we'll send them a link and we'll say, you've been selected to do a video interview. And we'll send them a link. They'll get on it. They'll have like two days to do it. We'll ask them three or four questions. They have three minutes to answer each question and they videotape themselves answering those questions. So when we've narrowed the number down that we bring to present to you, not only present a mountain of information, a mountain of paperwork and everything about them that we've learned, and if we learn anything negative, we tell you that too. We also present a video so you can put your eyes on them, you can see them and you can listen to them answer a specific question. That's something I think we do a little bit differently. It's very helpful to boards. Next. We meet with the board to review the remaining shortlist of candidates, which I just said, and assist the board in identifying the final candidates, prepare the board for the interview process. We work with you on scheduling and coordinating those interviews and we keep all the candidates informed along the way. We wanna keep you informed, but they're, they're chomping at the bit too. They're anxious. They wanna know what's going on. And we try to keep them informed the best that we can. Next slide, please. So after we hire, next slide. So that, the first four phases typically takes eight to twelve weeks. Then the superintendent is hired and then we go into phase five, is, which is that we continue to work with you. Next slide, please. Keep, continue to work with you. We meet with the board and the selected candidate. We establish performance objectives and measures that's gonna hold that superintendent accountable that you all have agreed to. And said, this is what we're looking for and this is what we want him to do, him, him or her, sorry. Provide the two-year McPherson and Jacobson guarantee. So let me explain that. If we bring, I don't know what the number is, we bring four candidates before you and you select one of them, we guarantee our work for two years. That if that candidate leaves for any reason, we'll do the search over free of charge, except for expenses, travel expenses. I live in Birmingham, Alabama, so I'd like to be at least, but I've never had one of those. I've never had a, a search that I had to do over. So I feel comfortable with that. If along the way you say, as a board, well, we really like these four candidates, but you don't have John Smith in there, and we know John pretty well and he's doing great work. Can we add him or her, whoever that might be? Our answer's gonna be yes. You can add, you're the board. You can hire whoever you want as your superintendent. But if you hire that person, our guarantee goes away. Just because they slip in the back door in the process doesn't mean that we're gonna guarantee it. We guarantee our candidates, our applicants, but no one else. Next slide, please. The board's investment. You know what you get. It's in the packet. I'm not gonna go into great detail. Just go click through that if you don't mind. Phase one through five of the superintendent process, advertising, two days of in-person stakeholders, online stakeholder feedback gathering using K-12 Insights. We're partners with them and they will help us. We developed that survey and we send you the link. You distribute it out. We'll talk about that process, but they help us with that. Stakeholder report presentation. We will meet with you as a board either in person or by Zoom and say, here's what we found. Here's, here's what we found in the in-person meeting. We give you a summary of all that with the, the highlights of that. Those meetings were, the critical areas that you, we think you as a board need to know, but we'll give you the whole report. But we'll kinda talk through that. And then also the online surveys as well. You'll get that information as well in a report. So you basically get two reports, one in person and one of online surveys. Stakeholder reports, video interviews of selected candidates, which I've already said. Next. Criminal, financial and degree verification, background checks on those individuals who are selected as the final, final candidates, travel expenses or consultants. And there's office expenses in Omaha, which is our home office that, you know, we're, I'm constantly in contact with them and they, we have employees there and things that they do for us as well, such as the packets that you have tonight. Next. Professional support beyond the search. Next, please. These are just a few, just, I'm not going to those, but executive coaching and support, board governance and leadership roles. Those are kinda workshops, if you will, board superintendent operating principles, leadership strengths. You see the list there of those and we can come in and do those types of things with you if you feel like, like that's necessary. Next. K-12 Insights, these are some of our partners, a couple of our partners, K-12 Insights. AI powered communication too. Let's talk and increase the stakeholder engagement and school district efficiency and communications. Next. Innovate K-12. I heard you talk about your strategic plan, so you already have that in place, but they, they do wonders in coming in and working with districts on strategic planning. Next. Okay, thank you. I, I, I am one hundred percent sure. I've gone over fifteen minutes and I apologize for that. So I'll take any questions you might have. I like this part better anyway.
Great, thank you, sir. I'll go ahead and do questions. We'll start over here this time. Ms. Bond?
Well, first off, I will agree with you that it's easy to say it's all about the kids and it is. Our reactions and reflections and how we do things is what separates us from talkers and doers. So I appreciate you saying that and acknowledging that because that is one of the most important things that I've, I've heard tonight. So I appreciate that. Again, you've done a fantastic job on answering pretty much everything that I thought I would ask. And when I kinda, I was going to say, well, being in Alabama, how would you communicate as easily? And understanding that we have many, many forms of, of Zoom and different things that make, make it a little more easy to communicate from a distance.
Yes, ma'am.
But you actually answered all of that as well. So thank you so much for coming and, and I'm glad that you're here in Virginia.
Thank you for the opportunity.
For a short time. Thank you.
Ms. Pardon?
Thank you from, to come from all the way from Alabama. You all have a, a very impressive record.
Thank you.
I, like I said, Ms. Bond said that a lot of things that I had in my mind, you addressed as you continued your PowerPoint. I did want to ask, and I did wanna say thank you for also making the statement about, it's easy to say something, but it's very hard to actually act upon it. So I'm glad to hear that you look at the action part and not just words. And I feel like that might be a part of how you go about possibly selecting candidates. It's not just about the interview and it's not just about how they come across. But I get the feeling from you and, and from what you've, you've said about your consultants because you've done so many of these.
Yes, ma'am.
Nationwide. And I'm assuming that homework has been done about this part of Virginia. And you said you are familiar with this area because you did do Roanoke County.
Yes.
And they're just down the road.
Roanoke City.
Roanoke City, I'm sorry, you said city. And so, you know, I am gonna ask you what I asked the other ones. And I'm sure you all have a thought process here about the, the very distinct, we have four very different district types with different communities, different thoughts, different ways of thinking and looking at things. How would that incorporate your firm into helping us pick the best candidate for what you think we need here at Montgomery County Public Schools?
Again, we have to determine what is it you're looking for, what is it that you want. When I served as a superintendent and I, I remember thinking to myself, we had six high schools. And I said, they're all exactly the same, but all different. Every community had their own way of doing things and how do you bring all that together? Because I'm a firm believer as a, when I talk to these superintendents, and I'll say it on your behalf, whether, you know, I'll say it on your behalf. You need to be a school system or a school district, not a district of schools out there, just everybody doing their own thing. When I went to that district, they were doing their own thing and it took ten years to pull, not, it didn't take ten years, but we pulled everybody together and we were rowing the boat in the same direction and doing things. So we have, I have extensive conversations with candidates, especially the serious candidates. Extensive conversations with them and I question them and I can tell generally. I pride myself, my wife always tells me, she said, I can't believe you. In one minute, you, you can ask three questions and make a connection with somebody you know from somewhere and you start having that conversation and you know somebody in a minute. She said, I can't do that. And I said, I've been, I've been doing it for forty, forty years. So that's what I do. I ask them questions and I generally can determine if they have the knowledge, if they have the passion, if their principles of beliefs and education align with what I believe in, more importantly, what you believe. So in listening to their, to their answers, I can generally sum them up and know. And if they, if they're not answering it, I'll ask them a more pointed question. John Maxwell says, great leaders ask great, great questions. And I think that's really important to ask those great leaders where they stand on certain things and how would they go about? And someone else said this and I agree with a hundred percent. I don't know if it's better to go first or third. I don't know. I was kinda disappointed I was third, but then I got to hear everybody else and I'm not copying anything that they said, but you know, I don't, it may sound like I am, but I don't intend to. This is what I would've said if I'd have gone first. But we asked, you know, we asked those questions to superintendents, pointed questions. And it's so important, and someone else said this, not what would you do if you were? It's what have you done to prove that you have a track record of doing this? So when you come here, you can say, this is what I did in, in another district and it worked and here's what we did. So I think it's really important, even as a board, as you structure your questions, whether we're doing your search or not. Structure your questions in that manner. What have you done, not what would you do? It's okay to ask the what would you do question, but more importantly, what's the proof that you know what you're talking about? I hope that answered your question. Sure, thank you.
Time to get you.
Thank you as well for, for coming out this evening. I wanna keep this on the short side here. So in the materials that you submitted, you said that you prefer an open search. And so the, the first firm that presented advocated for a closed search. Can you tell us why an open search is a better process than a closed search?
Why? An open search is better than closed or closed is better than open?
No, open is better than closed. Cause you're advocating for an open search. If I'm understanding correctly, that's diff, a different approach from the first firm. Am I right or wrong?
We advocate what we, we call a closed search, meaning that the information that we collect all through the process is not public. It's only public when you get to the end. So it's closed, meaning that's one of the first questions candidates are gonna ask me. And I can pick up the phone tonight and call someone and say, hey, have you thought about? And you know what they're gonna ask me? Is it gonna be open or closed? Cause I'm in so-and-so district. I'm making good money. My family's happy. I like my board. And if they find out I've applied for another job, I'm done. So they don't, they may want to apply, but they're not gonna do it if it's open to the media and the public and every, all that information is out there.
Okay, great. Thanks for clarifying. It was just something that you, that I saw in the, in the initial response to the RFP. Another thing I wanna ask you.
If I could add, in North Carolina, the ones that we've done there, those are closed. And I know in South Carolina, as previously mentioned, those have to be open and you have to announce that. Makes difficult, it makes it more difficult to attract top quality candidates when you do that.
Okay, you're on the, you have the same approach then. So I was looking at the, the details of the process and the timeline that you initially submitted. And one of the things that stood out to me is that you, you, you post at the beginning of the process, very early on. And it's after the posting that you gather stakeholder input. And that's a little different approach from the first firm that does more gathering of information and putting together the profile and then posts. So I don't know if you wanna speak to that, that.
Happy to.
Yeah.
We, when we meet with the board the first time, our goal is to come up with four, five or six statements. And there's a process we'll go through with you that you as the board, and we make that very clear, it's you as the board, think is important for the superintendent candidate to these characteristics. This is what you're, you as the board, you've identified that early. We've helped you with that. So we can get the posting out there so the candidates early can see this is what the board has said they want. We do come back and then we do the stakeholder meetings. And then we do the stakeholder report. And again, we share that information with not only you, but candidates wanna see that information as well. They wanna know what, what are the issues, what are the problems? If I apply for this job, what am I stepping into? So we'll have some people who may apply and then choose, choose to withdraw based on whatever, whatever reason that might be. So it's, it's just the way. So it's, it's just the way we choose to do it, it's been successful for us. We have a lot of meetings with stakeholders, we listen to you, we listen to, we have, if you choose to, we let you define the stakeholders, but we like to have students, I love to have elementary students and talk to them about what's important about your district. If I were trying to, if I were trying to encourage someone to apply for the position here as elementary students, what's important to you? Why would you wanna live, why would you wanna live here? It's, it's fascinating, some of the things they say. Middle school and high school as well. So we talk to all them and we listen intently and capture all of that information that's gonna help us let you know and let the candidates know what this district is all about.
Okay, great. And I'll just ask one final quick question. So I was looking also at the, the timeline that you have. So in the presentation, it's like eight to 12 weeks. In the initial information we got, it was a little, it seemed like a little longer timeline and we're not even doing those final interviews until January, which is just, was highlighted, that's in the middle of the budget season.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering, so there's a different timeline that I'm seeing tonight versus the initial information and I'm, I'm wondering, you know, I'm gonna say why it takes so long, but can you help me to, to reconcile the two and, yeah?
First of all, that's a candid presentation right there, where they put that, I don't put that together, they put it together in Omaha, which is fine, cause I, I know how to speak about that. So, and then, and in the, in the packet you received, it has an estimated timeline. It, those are estimations, those are not like, this is what it's gonna be. When we come the first time, I'll have a draft that I have, our team has put together and I've put together and I'll put it in front of you and say, this is what we believe would be a good timeline. So generally, it's advertised, generally six weeks, you wanna give, you don't wanna cut that part really short. And then there are certain steps, stepping stones along the way, you have to hit certain things you have to do along the way. It's almost like in the beginning, it's like hurry up, hurry up, hurry up, hurry up. And then you're just like, where is he? He disappeared. Well, I'm working, I'm communicating, I'm out there working, recruiting, talking to people, generating interest hopefully, still working, but you'll feel like, well, we're not really doing anything. And that's probably true, other than having some conversations with us about the district. So we'll put that together. When I say we, I'm talking about all of us. We'll bring it, we'll suggest it, you can change it. We'll, we'll go through two or three drafts before we hit it and when we hit it, we'll lock it down. And it's never locked down completely, it's, you know, it's, can be flexible if need be. But we, as far as when those meetings or whatever take place.
Okay.
We're flexible.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Franklin?
Okay. Dr. Roundtree?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll ask the, the question I've asked everybody. So with a diverse school district, with, with people from all kinds of backgrounds, all kinds of ethnicities, belief structures, whatnot, how do you evaluate if a candidate is sensitive with appropriate empathy for historically marginalized communities, whether that's by race, gender, sexual orientation, so forth?
Have those conversations and also look at their track record of their performance. We call and find out. I'm very blunt when it comes to talking about those kinds of things. I'm not gonna shy away from those questions and I'm not gonna shy away from any answer they might give. I told you, I hope you find this funny. I'm the guy who went to a historically black college, played football there for four years. My nickname, anybody wanna guess, my name's Barry Carroll, anybody wanna guess what my nickname was or AKA at an HBCU? Barry White. Anybody, I didn't seem like Barry White, anybody wanna guess why my name was Barry White? My point is, I don't shy away from asking questions, sharing stories, talking about specifics about communities, lower socioeconomic communities, doesn't matter about race. How do you deal with this? How do you deal with parents who are struggling with getting their kids to school, cause they're working two jobs? How do you deal with the mental health issues that are, you know, I just ask those questions specifically. So, and capture their answers and tell you what they say. And we try to get at that and you'll have that opportunity as well when you interview the person to ask those questions.
Thank you.
Sure. Ms. Frisell?
Thank you, Dr. Carroll, for being here tonight.
Sure.
Can you elaborate a little more on something that you shared as part of your discussion process tonight, or part of your presentation tonight with Dr. White in Roanoke City? And you said, you know, you reached out to her actively, she wasn't, she didn't respond to an ad. Can you, can you disclose a little bit about your headhunting kind of process or, I mean, if it's a trade secret, I understand.
So, it's all about having connections and contacts with people. Knowing people who know people who know people who know people. I'm a big fan of John Maxwell, by the way, but John Maxwell says, my legacy has legs because I influence people who influence people who influence people who influence people. And in the superintendent world, they're all connected. They're all connected and they know each other. So I knew who she was, I knew her story. I knew, I knew the whole story. And so I called her and she said, thanks, I, I'm not interested. And I said, well, you know, would you at least think about it? Let me tell you about Roanoke City, let me tell you what I found, let me tell you. And in the discussions, she finally said, well, maybe I'll just take a trip and go down there and see for myself. Said, please do, do that and don't be fooled. Candidates, who are top-notch candidates, they'll be here snooping around, they'll be here going to the grocery stores, they'll go anywhere they can where people will talk to them, they want to disclose who they are, they wanna find out about, think about moving here, my kids, you know, is this a great place to put my kids in school? If so, why? If so, if not, why not? So they do their homework. They will know you and your district better than you will know them the first day they walk in here, I can assure you. They know those things. So I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does, thank you very much. And I kind of have a follow-up to that, that you, you laid out a transition really well there. So when, being someone from, from outside the state, but you have done recruitment projects within the state, you probably know well enough from your own homework that the, Virginia presents certain challenges-
Yes.
-in public education, especially when it comes to funding and a lot of that becomes the burden of the, of the superintendent. So how do you make sure that candidates kind of, especially from outside of the state, understand what they might be getting into that may not be as obvious until you're kind of right in it?
Right. Looking at their background again and, and working with legislatures, working with state organizations, what have they done, how have they connected? I would say many superintendents, whether they're from Virginia or not from Virginia, if they're top-notch candidates, they know people from Virginia, they know about Virginia. You guys are on national news all the time, so we get to hear about you and not necessarily your school district, but your state and some of the things that you're dealing with. And so they, they'll know some of those, but we'll, also if they have questions, we'll put them in touch with individuals who can help them answer that question. We want them to learn and to grow. You know, this is, I, I think the first firm said, this is not a job, you just wanna cut your teeth on and step in, you know, and not know anything. You better have done your homework when you get here. That includes, you know, funding sources and how do you build a budget and how you deal with the county and how you deal with other authorities within, within the school district. I've walked into a, a search and they were having, of all things, water issues. They couldn't, students couldn't drink the water in the, in the school system, they couldn't drink from the fountains, they, they were having to bring water in. And so that was one of the things we talked about, how would you address that? What would you do? You know, that's really a city and county issue, but it's also, when it affects your school district like that, you have to be involved in that decision-making process. So we'll make sure they know what's going on, we'll question them to the nth degree.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Franklin, do you have anything yet? All right. You and Angie go in last, since you've heard all the questions, you, you already answered all of mine, so I appreciate that. And I think I heard you get to dig at Alabama football in there somewhere, which I'm fine with, so, good job. Any other questions, board?
We used to play Virginia Tech a lot, I don't, and I'm not sure, I know we're not this year, but I don't know in the future when we might again. I do have a six o'clock flight, so I'll stop talking, okay?
Great. All right, I think we're good. Anything else? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Will you be making that decision today or when will we be informed?
Yeah, so the intention is to, is to allow the public time to, to see this, you know, reach out to us, questions and stuff, and we'll, we'll make that decision very soon, but not tonight.
All right, no problem, I'm gonna slip out and thank you so much for your time. It's been a pleasure.
We are planning to do a closed session, meetings after this, to allow you each to come in.
Okay, okay, great.
Ask some other questions, whatever else.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So don't leave yet.
I remember that, I remember that.
You're good.
Thank you.
Great. And with that, do I have a motion to enter into closed session as authorized by Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia to discuss three purch, three purchasing matters? Second. Ms. Franklin, Dr. Gettrich, I think. Ms. Daley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond? Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gettrich?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Frisell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Intosh and Ms. Stanley and maybe Angie and Jordan, if y'all can kinda help manage the process here a little bit. Do we wanna go back to superintendent's? Yeah, we'll go back to superintendent's office and, there.
We're gonna close out over there.
Yeah, we'll close out over there. We don't have any more votes.